We will jump right now into our county cases as needed this evening and jump both feet in at this time. Jason, I would like to ask you to present text amendment 2015-01, Launce County Board of Commissioners.
Yes, sir. We have begun to really refer to these as the MAZ amendments because the bulk of the amendments have to do with the immediate activity zoning districts. You know, the history of working on these for some time, just a little bit of a deeper history. I mean, both Ms. Brazwell and myself have been on staff since the ULDC was adopted almost 10 years ago, and with a part of that came the innovative area that is known as the MAZ. Part of what we're doing here is potential changes to that. We're asking for your recommendation on that. From a historical standpoint, we've probably done over 200 amendments to the ULDC since it was adopted within that time span. I will tell you that I consider these MAZ amendments probably the second most important that we've had to consider during that time. With that, we probably have spent more time and received more scrutiny and comments on these slave amendments than we have on any others, even the most important ones, the ones that we consider that. So with that, I think that's for good reason. Moody is a very important economic engine and it's a very important institution to this community and this nation. So with that, we've tried to address concerns over the last few months as we've asked for more time for staff and planning commission comments and activities and Moody communication. I can tell you probably the most recent events, and you have a copy of this before you, is the chamber giving us their official board comments, which we've given to you in kind of a table format. Out of the 14 groups of amendments, you see eight of them either have approval from staff and no objection. Six of them have either some concern from staff or some concern from the chamber, and I'll try to detail those out in front of you in that table to try to help focus the discussion. So with that, we are here for questions or comments, and we'll try to address those at this time. But otherwise, we've consistently been giving you information since the work session, but most notably was that table we were able to prepare due to the chamber's comments today. That's really all I have. If you have any, try to entertain any questions or comments at the.
Commissioners, I know each one of you received this new verbiage today sent out from Jason. Each of them wanted to have an opportunity to look over it. Does anybody have a question for staff concerning this request and this new document that we have this evening? Any commissioner, any questions for staff? Since there are no questions to staff on this document this evening, at this time would like to go against normal flow and ask Moody representatives if they would like to come forward and also maybe present their thoughts considering where we are on this new verbiage we have today. Mr. Bill, Ms. Pam? Or both of you? We'll give you the opportunity to come. We had her number gun last week. She did a great job.
I'm Bill Ryan. I'm the chief engineer at Moody Air Force Base. Community planning falls under the lead of me, the base, and Summers, who's one of my supervisors, and that falls in her area. So we've been intimately involved with the original ULDC, many of the amendments, and with these also. I think in general, we're in great, I hope I didn't surprise y'all, there are a couple of items that actually improve MAZ that we're hardly in favor of.
Do you mind enumerating those for us, Bill?
Item number three, some of the design standards. Item number eight, the issue of not having hotels and motels in MAZ two. Those are improvements from Moody Air Force Base. So at the top, the density issue. Well, you go ahead, Pam.
We had some discussion last week on that designated clarification, make sure I understood, and that's the one for legally conforming lots that they wanted to come in now and build that they were under the two and a half acre current requirement. And that would be a different density than MAZ currently allows. So that would be a concern from that perspective. Understood, though, that they do, and lack this clarification, that they do still, you know, look at what the current funding is and whether it's in the APZ or MAZ 123 and apply those standards. So that was, good to understand that, so I appreciate that clarification. So that was our one concern there, that that would possibly pose somewhat higher density in some areas, but we need to show identification of those lots.
I don't think that that many locations, or Jason, you know, are happening well. By and large, the area of the whole ULDC is not highly developed. So places where there are small lots, you don't have a house on them, probably few and relatively far. So although, just general principles, we oppose that, I don't think it's a good idea.
And which one is that?
Number one.
Okay, okay.
Number two, of course, is the noise, where there's been a lot of discussion with the current, the current noise construction standards, noise attenuation construction standards, they're currently in the MAZ and ULDC, and what to do with the initial. So that, and there's been a lot of proposals, so I just, I guess I'm not sure if that's ready, if we really have ironed that out well enough to, but from Moody's perspective, from the Air Force's perspective, we need to try and ensure that somehow those noise considerations are presented to the public and that that's acted upon, so that they know when to make informed decisions.
So you don't want presidents, presidents of the public going forward? Is that what you're saying, Ms. Pam?
Something in the, something remaining in the ULDC, because the initial proposal had that coming out completely. So that would be definitely something that would not, that we would not.
I think some of the discussion is, like, on mobile homes, particularly in the higher closure of the ASI, that would be very difficult to enforce that. I know from being, living out on the West Coast, that you can buy a new home just like a sickle house, but that kind of defeats the purpose of the construction, homeless for a lot of people. I remember the SBC, I think it was 45 or whatever in that area. That's not difficult, and that's basically standard house construction. Some of the perpences and windows and things like that might require a, a, or solid core board or something like that, as compared to some of the stuff in the lower cost house you would get. But we feel it's our duty to at least notify people. At other bases I've been at, there's at least a notification process, if nothing else. If county feels that it's not possible to enforce that type of construction, then we'd at least tell folks, if you build a house and it's with an eye shot of Moody Air Force Base, it's noisy. What we're talking about, we're bringing much noise in aircraft in here in some time in the near future. I've lived at bases where we've had lots of noise airplanes, noise complaints, and it took the staff through full post, full time, to take care of it. But certainly, at least some type of notification process.
And that's been one of the things that's sort of, I'm just not sure if it'll really be as far as how it could be.
Just to clarify, page, Ms. Bill, not to get a sticky bull here, but on a state-built application, being a new home. So, I mean, most of the exterior doors are a solid core door.
Most of them are.
And most of them are. So are we saying that possibly the owner upgrade might be a window design? Just curious.
Well, I'd have to go back and go through each of the areas.
Yes, sir.
What's required, but an SDC of 45 is not hard. And it may be, that's the closest, closest to Moody, and so that might be not going to have mobile homes, or you prefer not to have mobile homes close to the base. The outer MAZ zones might allow. I haven't worked the specifics, the engineering specifics of that. My memory is, is even in the really high noise areas in APZs, they have to ask for a SDC of four.
No reason I brought it up, because I know that we've all kicked around some numbers of $7,000, $10,000, $15,000 where a window upgrade would need to be close to that.
Double pane or triple pane windows.
Well, I mean, it's typical double panes windows now, so I don't know if there's got to be some type of gas field or whatever, but I don't know that it would come close to the number like that. Just curious again.
I can't answer.
Okay. Anything else that you look at on these amendments that you mentioned, concerned with?
I think that's it. Everything else is either, we really have no issue that it's not in the MAZ or get so concerned with that. In fact, from a fumble, we really appreciate this opportunity to be a comment to this to the board. We really appreciate that. We appreciate the process, y'all volunteer, how long it's gotten dragged out. Some of that's our fault, because I'm a citizen of the community, but we may have anybody working for the staff and so.
We appreciate all y'all's efforts. Well, I think, but we do appreciate all y'all's efforts, working with Jason, the piles downtown to come together on some kind of resolution on this. But I love, commissioners, do we have any questions for Bill or Ms. Pam?
I've kind of got a broad question.
Sure.
I know you've had, you've got issues with two or three of these, for sure. The others, the question I would have, from my perspective, is, do you see any of the others, and I know you've put your blessings on them, but do you see any of the others through 14 that could potentially cause a problem with any new mission coming to Moody? Sorry, I mean, I heard the A-10s at some point may be going out, possibly.
Well, I mean, that is the Air Force position, the A-10s, the overlay. Carlisle is set publicly, probably after the New Jersey request, but some. The Air Force's position is, right now, is the F-35 is the replacement of the A-10. So that's the knowledge, the distinction. The aircraft divide, the aviation, because the F-35, the F-35, that have grip to the end, that's a, but I would say, there's nothing that worries me personally. I think at other bases I've been at, there have been a lot less protections in that regard. In discussions about BRAC, we just don't know. They have just kind of made up their questions with me along. In many cases, they've decided, good bases, and we close, and then look at the numbers and then.
Try to make it happen.
Try to make it happen. And that's exactly what happened in two of the phases when we were in the Air Force Base, and we spent enormous amount of time reviewing. So in that case, for BRAC, some of the questions were, kind of, off. There's nothing me, you or I can do about, things like how many doctors there are per square mile, things like that. As far as physical construction, I think the inclusion of our district noise information in this and in their A-10s is help. I think all the ones that we haven't, that we really agreed with or said we don't oppose, it's.
And I think it's just been very helpful to have them work out by that, because at first it was something that.
And I know I haven't answered your question.
I'm glad to answer.
I'm as close as I can get there.
What's the difference in what you agree with and you don't have any opposition? That's kind of got me.
Well, some of them are just, you don't have any dog in the hunt. Like I said, one or two of each are even in the MAZ, so we don't really care. So we don't oppose them. Some of these are actually positive.
Yeah, I can see some of them.
We're opponents of, so that's the difference.
Okay. I appreciate you saying it makes it easier for you, because with your knowledge, and if it makes it easier for you, just imagine how much easier it'd make for us sitting up here. I'll go ahead and tell you that. Any other questions for the Moody representatives? Thank you very much. We check the time.
We'll stick around.
Please do, before, ask for us to come forward and do that, any discussion amongst ourselves on this, as we sit here presently. If being none, at this time, I will ask for anybody wishing to speak in favor of this request to come forward at this time. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this request, please come forward. There being none, anyone wishing to speak against this request, please come forward against this time. Please state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Ron Borders. I live at 1718 Williams Street here in Valdosta. I'm here tonight as the chairman of board directors for the Valdosta Lounge Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to thank the planning staff and the commission and the county commissioners for taking the time for us to get to where we are tonight. Everyone has got a lot of work in this project, and everyone's been very cooperative thus far. You have, and Jason gave you this piece of paper that says the position of the Chamber of Commerce on these particular items. I don't want to belabor these in the interest of time, but I do want to expand on number one and number two. The chamber's position to oppose, number one, is based on us not knowing what could possibly be already planted on the referenced lots. There could be lots out there that have a recorded subdivision that we don't know about. If we knew what was on every lot out there currently planted or not planted, we wouldn't have any objection. But we have to oppose it right now of the format that it's in. We just can't take the chance that there's a subdivision that's been reported and may have 50 or 100 lots, 100, the possibility of building 100 houses out there, we just can't take that chance. So that's the reason of opposing number one. Number two, we're opposing that because we do believe that the A-10 will eventually go, and we do believe it will be replaced by the F-35. We also believe that the F-35 is a noisy airplane, about it has a noise signature equivalent to the F-4. For that reason, what we are asking is that in your added proposal, that the existing language be left, that the existing language be enforced, and that the historical noise contour be added to that amendment as a reference. So there will be no ambiguity as to what we meant as far as the noise exception area. That's pretty much the chamber's position. Anyone's got any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
What was it you wanted to add to?
The, in number two, that language, number two, that the existing ordinance be enforced, and that the noise contour, historical noise contour be added as a reference. It's a visual plate that could be added to.
So one and two on the, the schedule that Jason prepared for us tonight, is, the board's just, those two, the chamber is just opposing those two?
Yes, it did.
Of the 14 items?
Yeah, and then number four, there's some smaller items in number four there.
Okay, I see that now.
But for the most part, we don't have any objection, and a lot of this has come about because of your help, the help of the county commissioners and the staff, of course, have done a little bit of job working with us.
Any questions for Mr. Borders? Any questions at all? Thank you, Mr. Borders.
Thank you very much. I approve, I mean, I appreciate your favorable consideration of the chamber's position.
Thanks, thank you. And we do have time, if anybody else would like to number four, to speak against this request, anyone else wishing to come forward? And just for the record, please state your name and your address for the record, please, sir.
I'm Michael Lee, 4289 Spring Grant Circle, Valdosta. Appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight, how also do you want to run, thanking you for your hard work, hard work with the staff in getting to this point. I'm not going to reiterate the comments of Ron, because on behalf of South Georgia Military Fairness Council, we have a very similar position. As you know, South Georgia Military Fairness Council not only represents Launce County in working for the preservation of Moody Air Force Base in our community, but also in whole county area around Moody. I represent Launce County as a co-chair on the South Georgia Military Fairness Council. We also oppose items one and two, as well as some items in number four. The only difference would be regarding to item number five, and that simply is that there is a process in place already. We would encourage to leave that process in place. We would fully support the negation of a fee or the reduction of a fee for someone who lost a home, but this position is just a little more conservative and allows for review of something that would happen within the MAZ. That would be the only difference, in our opinion. Again, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Lee? Or commissioners, any questions at all? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I believe I'll ask another minute or two. Is anybody else wishing to come forward to speak against this request? Anyone else wishing to speak against this request? There being none, commissioners, do we need to have a communication between ourselves and conversation between ourselves on these items?
Yes.
Mr. Glass?
I actually, I should have asked my questions earlier, but I have just a couple of clarifications from Jason. Amendment number four and number 11, they seem to share some of the sections. So specifically, number 11 refers to section 50407. That also shows up in amendment number four. Section, amendment number four, section 40204 is also an amendment number one. If I could, could I just go through some of my series of questions based on each one of these groupings? Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
In amendment number four, section 40706, it references MAZ residential. I wasn't sure, was that, is that a specific zoning district, or what does that, does that have a specific definition somewhere there?
No, ma'am. There are a couple of places in the MAZs because they're mixed-use zoning districts, where we have to differentiate between a residential or a non-residential use. And so, for example, in setbacks, we try to separate the two, because obviously residential setbacks are different than a non-residential setback. So no, it's currently not defined, but the reason why we separated that is because we believed when you have one zoning district that does have so many uses, that different standards are appropriate for those residential or non-residential uses.
Okay. Ah, section 50208, I did not see any changes in that section. When I compared it against the existing documents, it's section 50208. I'm just not sure, this is a section about animal foster homes? I don't know what the changes are in there and why it's under MAZ.
That's on page eight of the amendments that you have. That could have been where staff had some discussion about potentially changing those, but we decided to leave those alone. But we listed them, you know, just in that, but I have the same copies that you do, and I don't show changes in those either. So we did pull those out at one point, probably because it had to do with the MAZ, but we didn't propose any changes.
Okay. So is section 402 or 4, is that part of one or four? That references density.
Let me just look at it. And section 402 or 4 is on page 405 and 406. That is the, those two pages on 405 and 406, that one section is the main, some of the main regulations in the MAZ. So I think it depends on which one, which particular regulation is there. The density sections are actually at the bottom of the page in item B, listed at the bottom, and C on the top of the next page.
You say B and C, Jason?
B and C. Those are the, the bottom of 405, B, and the top of 406 and C. Those are the two sections that I would consider are density related.
So since this item appears in both grouping, it needs to be decided which items should be and which one to do, because if, let's say, I don't know how we're going to approach all this, this is going to be item by item, looking by grouping, we should think that ought to be the way for us to approach this. In that case, if we say, if we recommend deny for number one, that would automatically mean that number four would see denied, because it cross-referenced it still as sections.
I understand. Yes, ma'am, and I, I tried to call out, like, the density, if you look at the way I listed them out, I list, you know, 402 or 4C1B and C1C as a particular density. I think some of the concerns that the chamber lifted up when they just list the whole section there is, I just don't think for those changes, they want any of those other minor changes to be made. But I follow you, you're right. I mean, that one section, because it contains so many, I mean, that's the section the noise amendments are in, that's the section we list out, you know, what uses are not allowed in certain areas, I mean, so there's a lot in 402 or 4. I agree, it could be very, you know, having to parse a lot out, you could, you could go to a finer brain and list those out, I agree.
Okay, I'm going to move to grouping number seven, which is section 40203. I was curious, why, why didn't you stay with the item number two that referenced back to the table where the non, um, the uses were indicated with asterisks in the table? Just let it stand for MAZ? Why the change?
Staff found there was confusion about which uses were applicable to the Valdosta overlay and which uses were applicable to the Moody, the Moody regulations. And so if you look in chapter two, that symbol that we use to denote those is actually the same asterisk. And so from a staff standpoint, we knew which ones applied to the MAZs and which ones applied to the airport, but if you had someone looking at that who maybe didn't have that knowledge, that would be confusing and difficult. So our solution was to separate them out and make it very clear which ones are applied which one.
So right now, the way the table is organized, the asterisk doesn't mean it's for both MAZ and Valdosta overlay, the airport overlay. There's no distinction.
That's right. That's right. There's, we came from a former chapter two ago, we had different indications. When we made them all one indication, and we realized that that was confusing, and we needed to actually separate that out, because the uses that are restricted in the airport are very, are much closer to the runway at the airport than they are in the MAZ. And so there's more restrictions on the ones that we have in the airport, because they're closer to the runways, whereas the MAZ goes out for thousands of feet. And so we realized that, okay, those areas need to be treated differently because they are different. And so we tried to do that. That was our solution to try to do that, is to eliminate the fraction there with the same symbol and separate those out to be very specific about which ones apply to the airport, which ones apply to the, to the Air Force Base.
Okay, fair enough. Is the airport authority agreement?
Yes, ma'am. We, we've shared these amendments with the executive director, you know, no objection or positive comments from him, and so I don't have any present, or anything to present from his standpoint that was a concern for their particular sections.
Okay. So going to, back to grouping number eleven, where I mentioned that section five, zero four, zero seven was also in section, amendment number four. I would think that that section really is number eleven, not in number four. It's not included in grouping number four.
What se, what section was that?
Section five, zero four, zero seven.
It actually starts on page eight. I believe why we listed it in both is because some of the changes applied to M-A-Z areas and some of the changes applied to P-D areas, and so we listed them in both. And we were, we were trying to be sensitive, the fact that it had, if it touched the M-A-Z, we tried to list it with the M-A-Z sections. So I think that's maybe why we double listed it, is because it had to do with some M-A-Z changes and some non-M-A-Z changes.
But it's the same issue, so if I'm inclined to deny number four, that's gonna affect number eleven, so it needs to be decided where that item goes.
I agree. You could, you know, I haven't heard any opposition to the signage changes, but you're right. I mean, if you deny one, it could affect how the other is done.
So how do we go about number eleven for tonight's sake, for tonight's, are we gonna expect revisions to this?
Uh, I mean, for me, if you, the only item that I've heard of that really breaks down to a very fine grain further than what we have now in the fourteen amendments is item number four, that M-A-Z other where we kind of, you know, that's just where we put the other amendments that didn't get a lot of comment or opposition, and the chamber has expressed concern on that section four oh two oh four, but on all the other sections, they, they're not, they don't have an objection, and neither does staff. Staff is recommending for approval. And so if you, if you wanna go that far, you could separate out number four with a more specific or specialized motion to try to address where the concerns are in the rest of sections.
Well, let's go back, let's go back to item number four, section five, zero five, zero three, which is page nine. This addresses telecommunications towers.
Yes, ma'am.
And I brought that up before, and I still don't know if telecommunications towers interfere, impact aircraft communication. So I don't know if where telecommunications towers ought to be sparred. I mean, I, I looked through the, the study that was provided, the installation of this zone study, I went back to that, and it doesn't specifically talk, use the word telecommunications towers, but it does bring up the issue of communication towers impacting aircraft communications. So I mean, that this further research should be done to address that item. It's not just a matter of heights.
Hmm, I think that when we get comments from Moody, the dominant concern about the towers is height and location because of where the planes fly, if, if they are flying in a path, or if they're gonna have to modify their flight patterns around those towers. So I, you know, I believe those changes are really worth considering because what it does is it formalizes our process, because right now, our communications with Moody, dealing with the airport and towers, and we do get tower requests, is not as formal, and this puts a definite timeline on a response and a response in writing, which helps both the county, the applicant, and the base. But I do, I mean, we, we have done okay so far. Certainly there have been some powers that have tried to challenge this, but ultimately I think those regulations in there, I understand the questions about height, especially as, you know, section A, we've had some discussion about whether or not to raise that ceiling and keep it the same, but certainly procedurally, those procedural recommendations are something that started with that JLS doc, or the JLS and the ACOS documents. So I think those procedurally are more important than I think the debate about what height we should stick to. So to me, if I had to just pick one of those, I would pick the procedures because I think those have been tested and vetted and, not only with the airport, but with Moody, and I think that's going to be an improvement.
Well, it, it might be that under that A paragraph, you could also reference section five, zero five, zero four, C, which addresses procedures.
Okay.
For communication facilities and towers to be part of that, where communication has to be established with the county manager and so forth.
Yes.
So.
I agree. That could, you could break that down, and really that section is two main parts. One, it's got some debate and discussion, and the other one that I think has a, a pretty good amount of support. The procedures has the support, the debate and discussion is about the height, that's section A.
And my last question, grouping number thirteen, um, the zoning map, I don't know if I've missed it, that was sent by email or it's in my package, but was it, was it sent by email?
Um, I sent some maps that showed those smaller maps, uh, the smaller lots, Chris Grant. I sent it in previous packets, it was inadvertent that I did not send it here, but that, that should have been included.
I meant, I meant number thirteen, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, that, I don't, I don't see it in this current packet, I know it's been sent to other packets, but that draft map, yes, ma'am, that, that might be a part of, a part of the packet.
You just missed that, Mr. Glad?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think I sent it out, I don't think I included the draft map with, with this particular packet. Don't know of any substantial changes to it, but certainly.
I wanted to see what the changes are.
Sure, sure. If you, you had any, if you have a previous packet, your October packet had a copy of that map, I just don't think the November packet does.
That's it for my questions, thank you.
Any other discussion between the commissioners, or any additional questions to staff, from And we've heard for the, the fours and the, and the nots, we've had discussion amongst ourselves, and I believe I'd like for us to consider some motions at this time, and they can be presented in a multiple ways, and I would just like for one of the commissioners at this time to sit forward some motions.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I would move that we recommend to the county commission for the approval using the groupings that Jason put together for us. We recommend approval of numbers three, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, and all of the fourth grouping except for sections four point oh two oh four, five point oh two oh eight, and five point oh four oh four. And just by way of explanation, the la, the last of those two, five point oh two oh eight and five point oh four oh four, I think have no changes or were mistakenly included in the group.
And just for clarification, Commissioner Bolson, three, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, eight, excuse me, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and with some changes to four, which you just outlined.
All of number four except four point oh two oh four, five point oh two oh eight, and five point oh four oh four.
And your motion is to?
Recommend approval to the county commission.
So we have a motion for recommended approval on the items that Commissioner Bolson has laid out.
Mr. Chairman, can you clarify the number four?
Number four, he wants to exclude, make sure Ryan, on oh two point oh eight, five point oh three oh two, five point oh five oh four.
No. We're gonna recommend approval, I'm recommending approval of all of number four except for three sections, four point oh two oh four.
Okay.
Five point oh two oh eight, and five point oh four oh four.
We have a question.
Five point oh four oh four. So all of those except those three can be recommended for approval.
Mr. Glad, would you get that?
I'm looking to see, five oh four, yes.
I know it's not by rules of order, but I could possibly help you with that.
Five point oh four oh four was mistakenly put in Jason's materials, I think it was meant to be five point oh five oh four.
That's what it said here.
But it has been listed all along as five point oh four oh four.
I think that's, I think that's correct.
Mr. Glad, there's a misprint over there. So five point five oh four, that's what it says here.
Yes.
But it should be five four oh four.
Yes.
Would you, would you read it, Mr. Glad?
I did find that typo today.
I'm gonna see, but sure, Mr. Glad was reviewing her notes, I just wanna give her a second. You need that, you need that, you good?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, like we were saying, by Commissioner Willis, do we have any discussions on the motion? Any discussion on the motion?
Uh, just by way of explanation, I, I wanna say to, to the staff and to the commission and chairman, everybody's working on this, this is a, as you know, it's somewhat of a complete reversal for me because I was pretty much against all of this at the start, but after spending about four hours delving through it and going through it line by line, I think we've actually come to a place where the M-A-Z has strengthened in several places. And, and my next motion, I'll, I'll tell you why I'm going there too, but.
So we have a motion, we have a second, we have any more discussion? Good with that? At this time, I'll put it to a vote. All wish to speak in favor of this request, please see if I'm raising your right hand. It is unanimous, eight zero on that request. Commissioner Bolson?
My next motion is I would, I would move that we recommend to the county commission we deny groupings one, two, five, and section, the changes to section four point oh two oh four out of grouping four. And, and by virtue of our last motion, the, there were no changes to five oh two oh eight and five point oh four, or we recommend not.
I'll second that. So we have a motion for denial, we have a second, any discussion on the motion? For Commissioner Bolson?
Yeah.
Mr. Ray.
Oh, you talking about denying the number two in its entirety?
Yes.
And that would revert it back to?
Its original language.
Its original language, if I understood, had no noise.
It did have noise.
It's not a force.
It did have noise attenuation standards, which are not forced currently.
Right.
And my reasoning for that is, is as we sort of discussed in the work session, is that we would take some more time to maybe find something that can be enforced.
Could, could be a fault.
That maintains the strength of the M-A-Z and protects, you know, protects the encouragement on maybe sort of the policy issues we outlined the other night.
I remember the suggestion, I just didn't know if we'd come to an agreement, but we would try to do some more work on that, but I don't wanna go back to something where we got nothing.
And I will also say in favor of this motion that, that number five, I've, I've added in there because I, I think it, you know, Jason pointed this out in some of his commentary, it actually weakens the county's ability to, to get housing out of an area that, that the county has a policy matter, doesn't want to be the changes for. So that's the reason I'm sort of recommending out number five as well.
Well, I would, I personally would have all of that, one and four.
Mr. Ray, can you clear on, on item two now about revert back to the, the vote?
So we're gonna have some more work on that.
We'll have some more work on that, yes, sir. So we have a motion, we have a second, any more discussion? If not, I will take a, a show of hands, all wish to speak in favor of this, you will raise your right hand signifying your favor. It's unanimous again, eight zero, Mr. Colman. Uh, Commissioner Willis, say it, I apologize. So Jason, does that temporarily, we will put this, take the moment, do you bid?
It certainly is going to make it on its way to the county commission, where I know there's gonna be some follow-up discussion on that time, but certainly I thank you for your time and your consideration and your efforts. Like I said, I don't, I don't know of another amendment that got more than everyone's time and effort to communicate on this, so I very much appreciate that. But we will make those changes and get it to the county commissioners for their consideration.
I'll also echo, if you will, the presenters from Moody about all the hard work between yourself and them, I appreciate everybody's hard work in getting to this point, and.
Agreed.
Thanks much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's move along.